It is 7:30 by my watch, and so I would ask that you bear with us just a moment as we end our closed session. May I have a motion to return to open session and approve certificate number 16-17-13 for the closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, second by Ms. Rine. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Miller Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Rine?
Yes.
Reverend Bailey?
Yes. Thank you so much. Next, we have our approval of the agenda. I would like to add several items to our agenda. I'd like to add first, an additional action item under number 8C-1, that being the V S B A Board of Directors at Large Positions, and I'd like to add two additional information items under Section 8E1, the update on the requests from the Clean Green Commission, and under 8E2, homework regulation update. I'd like to add all of those to tonight's agenda. And so with that, may I have a motion to approve our updated agenda for the evening?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Ms. Kay, second by Ms. Miller Richards. Any discussion or any additional changes? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All oppose? The motion carries unanimously. Next, we need to approve the minutes of May 1st, 2017, the regular school board meeting. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rine. Any additional discussion? Any changes? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, there's a second set of minutes.
Oh, there are?
The primary committee.
Okay. Yes, there are. Thank you.
Sorry.
So, may I have, may I amend that motion to include both sets of minutes?
So moved. Second.
Any additional discussion? Any more minutes to add? Did you get that? Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. Now we come to our favorite part of the meeting, recognition. We will start this month with the Word of the Month, reflective to be presented by Hugh Mercer.
There we go. It's my pleasure to present the Word of the Month, reflective, as presented by Mrs. Julie Schwartz and her first graders. Okay, we have Lily?
Lily Adair. Andre Lewis. Tahura Neel. William Harmson. And Presley Saldana. I didn't do so well on that test. I should have studied more and paid better attention.
My goal is to be a reflective student, so I will be the best me I can be.
Wow. Great job Lily, Andre, Tahura, William, and Presley. And thank you, Mrs. Schwartz. That is a challenging word, reflective, for first graders, and they did a wonderful job. Let's give them another big round of applause. Okay, PTA. This year, our PTA president is Ms. Emily Freeling, and she's been recognized tonight for all her service this past year. Some of her great accomplishments have been the purchasing of an adaptive swing for our playground. She partnered with Tru Fredericksburg to plant trees on the grounds. She helped initiate the purchase of two picnic tables, no, four picnic tables for our staff to enjoy lunches outside. She led a very successful Booster-Thon fundraiser this year, and that's helping to pay for improvements to our playground. She led the partnership with U M W for the annual parent versus teachers basketball game at the Anderson Center, which was lots and lots of fun. Operated an in-house holiday shop without vendors, where the purchase of family gifts was available to all students through a credit system. Students were given credit to purchase items, and every child at U Mercer was enabled to buy presents for their family at holiday time. And also partnered with the P E Department for Field Day, which will provide treats for all students, including dunk tanks. Thank you for your service, Emily Freeling. You've been a great president. At this time, I'll turn it over to Matt Terry, principal of Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Thank you.
Good evening, Lafayette. Would like to welcome and thank our PTA president, Kari Bruton, for all her service and her dedication as a PTA president this year. She comes tonight with her son, Justin, in fourth grade, and she was a two-time president for us while he was in third and fourth grade. She's been a huge supporter of all of our learning community, and we certainly appreciate her leadership in helping us achieve one of our most important goals, and that is our additional playground that is coming very soon. So thank you, Kari, for all your service. And here's Dr. Wyatt.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure tonight to talk to you about the Welka Grant Middle School PTA. We actually have two individuals, they'll tell you their team, but we do have one president, but they work so closely together. So I want to thank Ms. Jen Kabsah and Kristin Snead for their work this year. Of course, they always give us snacks and treats for our teachers, but this year, they did something extra special, and that is providing reading incentives for our children as they reach their goals throughout the year. So our students receive gift cards throughout the years as they reach different benchmarks. And one special thing that they also did this year was they are sponsoring our end-of-year war celebration, and you're going to hear about that through our Effective Schools presentation later if you're around. But that's a positive recognition for students throughout the year for small things that they've done. We always want to keep in mind those small positive steps for students. So to Jen Kabsah and Kristin Snead, who couldn't be with us tonight, we just want to say thank you for all of their hard work. Thank you.
It is my pleasure to introduce our booster president, Mrs. Ode Mann. Ode has served our school for two years. This year, the club sponsored a vendor's fair and hosted the annual golf tournament. The club purchased shirts for the girls' basketball team and sponsored a team meal for football. For our teachers, the boosters sponsored a breakfast during back-to-school week, packed the pods with snacks and beverages, and provided lunch during the teacher appreciation week. Just last week, the boosters provided 10 graduating seniors with book scholarships at our senior honors evening program. Thank you, Mrs. Mann, for your support and all you've done for James Monroe.
Bus drivers.
Good evening, everyone. Chairman Bailey, Dr. Milton, all of our invited guests. Tonight, I would like to recognize Ms. Deanna Dent for winning third annual Fredericksburg City Public Schools Transportation Bus Rodeo. This event took place on May 6th, where they had to go through all four levels of weather, including sun, rain, shine, a little bit of everything else. We had 15 participants this year, which was the highest that we've ever had. We also had three community sponsors that did an excellent job. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Brian Kirin for providing the after rodeo luncheon, including prime bread and other good food. Ms. Dent had the best time out of everybody, also made the fewest amount of mistakes, and she will go on to represent the Fredericksburg City Public Schools in the Virginia Department of Transportation Summer Statewide Rodeo later this summer. Bring home the gold. Thank you, Ms. Dent.
Since 2013, U Mercer students and parents have been rallied to participate in the St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital Math-Athon by our very own Mrs. Kathy Weller, a kindergarten teacher and math lead teacher. The St. Jude's Children's Hospital treats children battling cancer and other deadly diseases from all over the world, including the Fredericksburg area. Students complete math problems and ask friends and family to sponsor them. The Math-Athon has been a huge success, and since 2009, U Mercer has raised over $36,000 for the hospital. Classes that have raised the most money over the years include Ms. Stapletons, Ms. Bondcellars, Mr. McLungs, Ms. Downers, Ms. Christie's, Ms. Mandals, Ms. Memos, Mrs. McKinney's, and Mrs. Wellers. Students and parents are to be applauded for supporting this worthwhile endeavor, and Mrs. Weller is to be commended for her dedicated effort in helping all to see the need to contribute to such a philanthropic cause. Please join me in bringing recognition to Hugh Mercer's math lead teacher, Kathy Weller. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Wyatt once again. Thank you.
Good evening again. It is my pleasure tonight to talk to you about the Word Masters Challenge, and it is indeed that a challenge. Each year, our honors English students participate in this Word Masters Challenge. It is a national language arts competition, and they have three meets throughout the year. They are under the direction and instruction of Mrs. Susan Ingerbreton, who does a fabulous job with our students. So tonight, I'm going to recognize our three highest scores, one for each grade level. So if you could please help me congratulate the following students. We'll begin with sixth grade. Congratulations to Justin Wade, son of Ms. Cherie Corningay. Moms like front pictures. Middle schoolers love selfies. Congratulations, Justin. Let's give her a round of applause. Our seventh grade winner is Gray Muldro, the son of Ms. Chris Muldro and Ms. Tamara Muldro. Congratulations to Gray. And our final student is an eighth grader, Mrs. Zoe Young, the daughter of Mr. Ethan Congratulations to all of our middle schoolers for their participation. At this time, please welcome Dr. Asha.
Good evening once again. Tonight, we will recognize some of our spring athletes. Girls tennis are battlefield district champions, conference 28 champions, region 3A East champions, and competed in the state 3A semifinal today. Grace Hall, daughter of Mr. Chris Hall and Mrs. Rebecca Hall, captain, girls tennis. Lucy Castles, daughter of Mr. John Castles and Mrs. Robin Castles, captain, girls tennis team. Lucy has also qualified to participate in the state singles tournament. Congratulations, Lucy. And Ms. Robin Castles, coach of the girls tennis team. Congratulations, girls tennis. Boys tennis, our boys tennis team are the battlefield district champions. We'd like to recognize Marshall Wood, son of Mr. Ken Wood, and Mrs. Rise Wood, captain, boys tennis team. Marshall was the region doubles champion. Marshall has qualified to participate in the state singles tournament and the state doubles Klaus Haroldson, son of Mr. Larry McMarlin and Mrs. Alba McMarlin, captain of the boys tennis team, and Klaus was Marshall's partner and region doubles champion, and will participate Thank you, Klaus. Zane Landek, son of Mr. Robert Landek and Mrs. Cameron Landek, captain of the boys tennis And Mr. George Christopher Otis, coach of the boys tennis team. Congratulations, boys tennis. You're welcome. Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize members of our track and field team. Our team had a very successful season, completing the V H S L season this past weekend at the state meet in Harrisonburg. Representing J M were Lila Kobe, daughter of Mr. Damian Kobe and Mrs. Mary Lee's Kobe. Lila is the conference 28 champion in the 400-meter run. She finished 11th in the 400-meter at the state meet. Alexis Clark, daughter of Mr. Stacy Clark and Ms. Tammy Clark. Alexis is conference 28 champion, region 3A East champion, and the state champion in the shot put. She was the conference 28 champion in the discus, region 3A East champion in the discus, finishing second in the state meet. Hunter Frizzell, son of Mr. Daniel Frizzell and Mrs. Kristen Frizzell, conference 28 champion in the 1600-meter run. At the state meet, Hunter finished fourth in the 800-meter run. Hunter Frizzell is not here. We'll congratulate him. Mitch Dolby, son of Mr. Andrew Dolby and Mrs. Michelle Dolby. Mitch was the conference and regional champion in the 3200-meter run. Mitch finished ninth at the state meet. Christian Walker, son of Ms. Stephanie Walker Smith. Christian was a member of the 4x100-meter relay team, which finished first in the conference 28 meet. Is Christian here? No? We'll congratulate Christian. Next, we have Zion Austin, son of Mr. Charles Firm and Ms. Crystal Firm. Zion was a member of the conference champions 4x100-meter relay team. And next, we have Erin Johnson, son of Mr. Kenneth Johnson and Ms. Betsy Johnson. Erin was also a member of the conference champions 4x100-meter relay team. Next, we have Peter Haynes, son of Mr. Peter Haynes and Ms. Christine Haynes. Peter was also a member of the conference champions 4x100-meter relay team. It should also be noted that the 4x100-meter relay team finished fifth in the state meet. Looking forward to great things next year from this team. And I'd like to recognize our coaches, Mr. Daryl Dyson, coach of the track team, and Ms. Tammy Clark, coach of the track team.
You made everyone else do it.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our recognition. It has been a fabulous year. Thank you all, students and teachers and coaches. Yeah, go on and clap, that's fine. And if you'd like to stay, please do so.
He might do a lot of volunteerism. He just ran with somebody in the, where we, we went to the Grand Court in, in New York when it was down. You know how you do a case? Yeah.
The next part of our meeting is the hearing of citizens. At this time, are there any citizens wishing to address the board?
Hi, my name is Kimberly McGee. I reside at 812 Wolf Street in the city, obviously. I currently have a second grader and a fourth grader, so Hugh Mercer and Lafayette. And I just wanted to take a second to actually thank you all, as well as the administration at all of those schools. I know that, you know, you guys have already included the words of the month of the I B program. I know that middle school and high school have already been, you know, well into the I B program. As a 16-year veteran teacher of Stafford County up until right now, I cannot tell you how excited I am about the I B program coming full term, all the way through K to 8 grade, error, K to 12, all the way through. I am one of the teachers that, if you've heard of Virginia Demonstration Project, I'm one of the teachers that originally began that program, so I could cry. It means so much to me to see a program come to our school systems that really develops units as wholes and doesn't see the S O Ls as a checklist that we need to make our way through. Kids are not going to learn if we continue to look at the S O Ls as a checklist. So, for 16 years in Stafford, I have been going for this, so I might have to jump ship and come to you all. But I am just super excited.
What's your name again?
I went to a meeting at Lafayette the other week just to hear a little bit more about it, and just came home raving to my husband about how what a great program I think it's going to be. And I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that and hopefully continuing on and really doing, hopefully, what I B really intends to do, which is just to build well-rounded, really skilled problem solvers and learners and community, you know, development. Thank you.
You have another minute left.
Yeah. Maybe we could work on some communication between schools so we don't overlap activities, but that's a whole nother.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is the superintendent's consent agenda.
I recommend approval of the consent agenda, which includes administration of federal programs and head start approvals.
May I have a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, second by Ms. Boyd. Any additional or any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Next, we have our action items. Dr. Milton?
Recommend the board approve the personnel list, including the addendum.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Miller Richards, for that motion, and Ms. Rine, for the second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Rine?
Yes.
Reverend Bailey?
Yes. The motion carries unanimously. Next action item is the adoption of
Next action item is the adoption of the revised FY 1718 School Division Operating Special Revenue Grants and Capital Improvement Plan budgets. Dr. Milton, you have a recommendation?
I do. I recommend that the fiscal year 2017-18 operating grants and CIP budgets be adopted as revised, approved by City Council on May 9, 2017, and presented in the amounts of $43,740,830, $5,141,035, and $2,015,000, respectively.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, second by Ms. Boyd. Discussion.
Tell us, remind us, Dr. Milton, how much money we asked for from the city?
Well, it started out at about 1.8 million. We got down to 1.4. Then health insurance came in a little bit better than, a lot better than we thought it would be. We went to City Council with a formal request in April of 1.1 million.
And what was the net, or?
We, it was around 800,000. The 1.1 million I just mentioned was a round figure. We have had to trim an additional $349,000 out of our budget.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Did we already move to accept that recommendation?
Yes.
We moved in seconds.
We're in discussion, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries. Our next action item is the lunch price increase and breakfast price continuance.
Recommend that the school board approve the following meal prices for 2017-18. Breakfast at Walker Grant and James Monroe is $1, it's no change. Lunch at Walker Grant is $2.85, which is an increase of 10 cents. Lunch at James Monroe is $2.90, which is an increase of 10 cents. No changes in the à la carte prices at this time.
May I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ream. Any discussion?
We will still have the CIP program in place at Walker Grant Center, Hugh Mercer and Lafayette. Yes.
Yes.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We do have the additional action item, and that is the VSBA Board of Directors nomination for at-large positions. I don't know if, did you put anything out for that?
Everyone has.
Everyone has one?
Yeah, we do.
So, any questions about that?
You would like to run for the at-large position?
Yes.
And you would like our endorsement?
I would.
Okay. So moved.[827.44][827.44][laughter]
I don't even have to make a motion when it's already.
That's right.[832.94][832.94][laughter] I think, okay. It's been moved and seconded. I don't know who, I think Ms. Kay moved and Ms. Miller Richards second. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Thank you very much. The motion carries. I will submit my credentials for the at-large position for the board of directors.
When is all this information due to them?
I think July 1. Right? I think it's July 1. Yeah.
Good luck, Ms. Wright.
Say again?
I said, "Good luck, Ms. Wright."
Yes.[883.19][883.19][laughter] All right, I think we are ready for our first informational item.
Good evening. I am going to introduce to you Dr. Melanie K. Wyatt and Dr. Tanisha Rochelle. They are going to be providing the board tonight an update on effective schools at the secondary level. And up first is Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Bear with me while I get used to this positioning of this microphone here. This evening, Dr. Rochelle and I are going to present to you some highlights from our BLTs, which we've worked through the effective schools process for the secondary schools. It's funny because when we were talking about doing this presentation, IB, of course, always came to mind, so it was great to hear that story to start off our presentation. Of course, we're always reflective in what we do at Walker Grant and James Monroe using the reflective schools process, but this year, we were extra fortunate in that we were working on becoming an IB school, so this process actually mirrored what is done with IB schools when you're talking about students being reflective and teachers being So I'm going to give you a few highlights from our BLT correlates this year, and we do have Ms. Emily Heller here, who is our BLT chair, and so I'd like to thank her for all of her work, because it is a lot of work to do that, as well as be our math specialist. So thank you, Ms. Heller. I'm going to highlight just two of our correlates from this year, because there was so many activities that I could highlight, but we're going to focus with our time on task and our instructional leadership correlate. If you walked throughout our building this year, you would see this ICIB little emblem, and our focus this year on everything we did was stemmed around IB. And that IB framework was really to get students and teachers more engaged and to be more collaborative. So we tried to really model with all of our activities what IB wanted from us. And our time on task, they did a STEAM night, if you were able to stop by, I know some of our directors stopped by for this event in October. We lost count after 580 attendees. That was fabulous to see students, parents, community members, we even had some Lafayette students come up and attend, but we had 39 working stations for students to become engaged in. We made sure that when the students took their little profile cards around, that they really focused on being thinkers, thinkers, risk-takers, and communicators, and those skills are also mirrored in what we worked on this year, which is our profile of a graduate, which makes our students critical and creative thinkers. So this event now is an annual event, and our STEAM ambassadors also help our correlate leaders plan this event. If you have the opportunity this fall, please come out and see this event, because there's about 30-plus STEAM ambassadors that work with our correlate leader to make this event Our instructional leadership correlate, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we did the SSP, or the Student Support Program, and that focused on reducing discipline, but also keeping students in the classroom. And that was big for us, because anytime a student's out of the classroom, they're going to miss instruction. So we were, you know, we were successful, we accomplished that, and then we wanted to have more of a positive approach, and that's where this WAR program came about. The correlate leaders came up with little cards that you can give a student if they were caught doing something good. We tried to keep the focus each month on our IB learner profiles, so a student would take their little card, bring it to lunch, put it in a little box by grade level, and we drew weekly winners. And then now our PTA is sponsoring an end-of-the-year celebration where it will probably be several hundred children celebrating their positive accomplishments in alignment with the IB learner profiles. So we're really excited that we were able to have like a step two to this. Now, if you're not busy tomorrow night, our time on task is also working on a career night tomorrow night. It focuses on career and college readiness, and this event is a little bit different this year, because we're really trying to focus on some of our IB profiles, of making sure our kids are thinking about 21st century jobs, something that they wouldn't normally think about, jobs that they've never been exposed to. So if you stop by, you're going to see some unique, and I mean really unique, careers there, and we're also going to talk to them about the courses that they need to take as middle schoolers and high schoolers to get ready for these positions in the future. Because we partner with our communities, it's also a good opportunity for these students to start thinking about their community projects, and maybe they can get some ideas on this night as we start the fall off with community project ideas. So see you tomorrow night, June 6, 6:00 to 7:30, if you have nothing else to do, and I'm sure you all have nothing else to do tomorrow night. And our final slide, I just want you to know that as we worked on becoming an IB school, our world language was a big piece that we've added this year, and our world language teachers, because there's only three of them, they tried to put this event on by themselves, and it was a lot. But now our correlate leaders are actually going to come together, because we've done a lot of collaborative work this year, take over this project, and this is now going to be an annual event for us beginning next year. This event also had several hundred families in attendance. We also had students from Lafayette come in. It was just a fabulous night, and our correlate leaders enjoyed this collaborative and very engaging format, which also is in alignment with what an IB classroom should look like. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Rochelle.
Thank you. Kathy Schaffner served her second term as our BLT chair this year, and we certainly would like to thank her for all of her work. Tonight, I will highlight three initiatives led by the correlates that are highlighted on your screen in orange. Those correlates are time on task, our homeschool relations correlate, frequent monitoring of student progress, as well as instructional leadership and safe and orderly environment. One thing that the faculty and staff have expressed for a number of years at JM is the continued need for more parent involvement. Our goal at JM is to enhance partnerships and communication with students, parents, and our communities. As such, three correlates work together. Those correlates, time on task, homeschool relations, and frequent monitoring, all worked to implement the JM Get on the Bus Tour this year, and it was a tremendous feat. In an effort to connect teachers and our feeder communities and strengthen our united approach to student success, we held three tours this year. Our teachers and staff loaded a school bus, thanks to Dr. Gordon and Transportation Department, and our kickoff event was held in November. We toured several different communities in one evening. We visited the Bragg Hill Family Life Center, the Dorothy Hart Community Center, the Rappahannock Boys and Girls Club, as well as the Idyllwild Clubhouse. The second leg of the tour was in January. In January, we visited the Mayfield Community Center. Each tour included information on Power School, what we're doing with Rachel's Challenge, fast facts about JM, SOL and project graduation information, as well as tutoring information. Our culminating event was held in March and truly was a collaborative effort between James Monroe and Reverend Henderson and his staff at the Bragg Hill Family Life Center. This event drew a large crowd and included an opportunity to interact with teachers and support our students as they performed a few steps and dance routines and played in our version of March Madness in the alumni versus student basketball game. So overall, we view this initiative as a success and look forward to continuing it and expanding it in the fall. So that was our JM Get on the Bus Tour. As we continued our intentional focus on writing, having a school-wide approach to writing, the instructional leadership correlate led our Drop Everything and Write initiative for the second year, but we had a couple of changes that I wanted to highlight. We dedicated this year two Fridays each month to this activity and highlighted the IB Word of the Month and Rachel's Challenge. The students participated by submitting various genres of writing, and their samples and submissions were posted throughout the building, and winners were selected and given a swarm t-shirt. And so part of the effective schools process is to reflect, right? So the big question is, has this made a difference since this was our second year? So I have a little data for you. Out of 231 juniors to take the writing SOL or Work Keys Writing Test this year, 231 juniors passed. So that is a 100% pass rate for writing for our junior class.
All right.[1426.48][1426.48][applause]
We also tested our ninth and 10th grade students this year, and they are showing significant gains as well, in that ninth graders have a 79% pass rate so far, they have two more years, and the 10th graders are sitting at an 83% pass rate so far. So we're very proud of our students. So yes, I do believe, I believe that this school-wide effort, coupled with the hard work of our dedicated staff, has indeed made a difference. In fact, which was very surprising to me, the feedback from our staff is that they would like to see more extensive writing become part of this initiative next year. So we will see what we can do to make that happen. Oops, sorry. And finally, the Safe and Orderly Environment Correlate responded to our Rachel's Challenge this year by recognizing students for demonstrating genuine acts of kindness, integrity, compassion, and leadership. Each month, our faculty would recognize these students by giving them a High School Heroes Card, and students could then write their name on the card and drop it off in one of the designated boxes throughout the school and be eligible to receive a prize. Prizes included things such as tickets to athletic events, gift cards, JAM gear, et So as we study, reflect, plan, and do, the effective school process truly does allow us to rely on the expertise of our internal stakeholders to plan and implement the changes necessary for our schools to provide learning for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Milton, you are?
Yeah, Mr. Baker is out of town. If you have any specific questions regarding the financial report, I think he's back in the office tomorrow, but you'll see a year-to-date summary in your packet of the Operational Fund 205 and the revenue, Special Revenues and Grants Fund 211 as of April 30.
Frederick Spurk City Public Schools Virginia Preschool Initiative Program serves identified four-year-old children who qualify under the VPI guidelines. Due to the renovation project at Walker Grant Center, three of the four classrooms were relocated to Hugh Mercer. After much consideration and in an effort to align instructional practices, the schedule, and support services with VPI and the elementary school, we plan to move the fourth VPI class to Hugh Mercer, starting with the 2017-18 school year. Are there any questions?
You said the fourth class?
Yeah, there are four of the three, there are three already at Hugh Mercer.
So, okay, so they'll all be at Hugh Mercer.
And these are only the VPI students, not the Head Start students?
That's right.
Will we need to move any Hugh Mercer students to accommodate them?
No, we'll be able to accommodate all of them at the school.
Okay. That's big.
Yeah.
That's a big move.
That'll leave us with extra space at the Walker Grant Center?
That's right. Possibility for expansion of some of the Head Start processes.
That would be terrific if we could do both of those. I know that the VPI teachers that I've talked to that are at Hugh Mercer have really enjoyed being there and like that integration, and I'm sure it's going to be great for the kids to already be familiar with Hugh Mercer. Nice work.
And the supervision of the VPI program will be done by?
Well, of course, Ms. Tankersley is the leader of the building, but we'll give her some support, some help with doing that.
And there will be a VPI coordinator as well.
Right, okay, that's what I wanted, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Employee incentive awards?
Well, we, it's that time again. We have an employee incentive award committee that is comprised of one school board member, Ms. Catton, Mr. Russ, and myself. I think all board members, except Ms. Boyd, have had an opportunity to serve on that committee.
I nominate Ms. Boyd.
I'll second that.
I was going to say, do we have a volunteer, but you've been voluntold.
I think so.
By acclamation, done.
Okay.
We will be touched, Ms. Boyd.
Okay.
There will be no opposition to that.
Are you sure? Yeah.
Well, VSBA Board of Distinction update. I think all of you should have a sheet that looks like this, with a lot of yellow on It has all the information. I won't read it. There are one or two items that we had questions about. It's my understanding that we can overcome those. For instance, we missed a hot topic, but there is a way to overcome that, I'm not sure what it is. But I think the real issue had to do with our retreat, and so that is the only unmet item with no way to over. And so that is the only unmet item with no way to overcome it without having one. So we need to decide if we're going to do a retreat. It has to be done by July 1?
June 30th.
June 30th, so that we can finalize paperwork.
And we would do the self-evaluation and plan for improvement at the retreat?
Yes. And it could be done in a four- to five-hour block anytime. It just has to be done, so we have to decide if we're going to do it or not.
It has to be four or five hours?
Well...
It's supposed to be a day.
Because, right, but what you're proposing is that this wouldn't be the retreat that we have normally done where we talk about goals and mission and all that. This would be a retreat where we talk about ourselves.
Yes.
For four to five hours.
Well, and you can do the goals and stuff. It just needs to be part of that, right?
No, that's...
The dilemma, if you will, or the pushback, is that we want to have a retreat. There's been discussion about a retreat that involves Dr. Melton and his staff and the administrators in the system so that when we talk about goals, expectations, planning issues, that they can be involved, that we are a part of a larger team. The board retreat that meets the requirements for Board of Distinction does not require us to do that. That's a good thing that we do.
Right.
The Board of Distinction requirement is just that we have a self-reflective time as a board to look at governance and practices within the board.
So that's a self-evaluation. That's not, so that wouldn't be a time where we would...
So we want to do both. What we did in the past was, in a sense, marry both of them. We went out to Charlottesville. We did board reflection stuff, and we also had Dr. Melton, Ms. Catlett do some presentation. We talked more expansive about where we wanted the organization to go.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We want to do that, but to meet the Board of Distinction requirement, what we have to do is self-reflect and talk about how we operate. So the question is, do we do them all together, or we do both, or we do none?
Right. And that's the only thing that's missing? I thought there is...
Well...
If we do the full retreat, if we did that next...
If we do that in the fall?
If we do that in the fall, or somewhat, that would qualify for next year if we need to.
For the next time.
For the next cycle.
The next cycle.
Yes.
If we needed to, if we decided to go through that again.
Right.
The other thing is deciding whether the Board of Distinction is something important to us. Parts of it, I think, are meaningful. Parts of it are checking the boxes for VSB to have people attend their sessions to make sure they're well-attended.
So what do we get out of it? What does the school system get out of us being a Board of Distinction?
We get a plaque, Jen. No, I think what's been beneficial is the retreat, that it pushes us to do things that we hadn't...
I liked, yeah, I liked the retreat. But to distinguish between, I'll do whatever the board would like on the Board of Distinction, but I don't find it especially...
Useful.
Well, I don't see as a school system how we ask our students to be high achievers if we're not going to be high achievers.
Yeah, the Board of Distinction is just a designation. It's the process.
Right.
Because we did things to achieve the Board of Distinction that we didn't do, like the review of our policies.
Right.
We didn't do that prior to us pursuing Board of Distinction.
Right.
There are things that, not in a formal setting, we didn't do a retreat that I've been on, and I think it's like, I mean, I don't want to compare it to tests, but it's just a standard. And so, yes, it is just an award, but it is the pursuit of that award that brings about the change. And so...
And it is, you know, like some of the VSB conferences might be more pertinent to us than others, but I think that it pushes us to go so that we are as up-to-date on what's happening in the world of education as we can be.
So this is important. The Board of Distinction is important to you, and you think it's, I mean, I think the things in it, many of them are valuable. So first, I think the thing to establish is if the Board of Distinction is something that we find urgent to do, and if that's the case, then we have to have the self-reflective retreat. We don't really have a choice.
I think we find it urgent because it's upon us.
Well, that's what I mean. That's why I said it's urgent.
So let's ask another question as well, and that is, would we benefit from doing the self-reflective retreat?
Now, I think that's a good question.
Yes, we would.
And I think we would. And so if that is agreed upon, then perhaps we should do it, and then it'll just follow that we'll also stay up-to-date on the Board of Distinction.
I also think we're, if that's the only thing that we haven't met, I think it's worth...
We still have to do it.
We've done everything else. I think we should try and complete that this year.
And while I went to that hot topic kicking and screaming, I was one of the few school board members bragging about the type of board that I serve on. And I think a lot of that has come from the fact that we are high achievers. Even when we go to VSB, you know, we go out and jog and all the stuff that we do that helps us bond, helps us work through issues together. So I think we're on the right track and we're doing a good job about that.
So I think, Mr. Bailey, you have a consensus? You will send us information to coordinate a date?
Well, I can make it easy for you. It can only be a weekend, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I was looking at a weekend, and I was looking at maybe like a Saturday morning or a Sunday afternoon.
Yeah.
Make it easy. I have a format for a retreat. It's, I mean...
I'd be happy to plan the agenda also for the retreat. I've done that many times for that type of thing.
So this has to happen quickly.
Yes.
So if there's, email Debbie a date if there's something you need to stay away from.
There are only two weeks, right?
Yeah. Well, we got to get it done.
Okay, so you'll send us an email with dates?
So it looks like Saturday, the 24th?
No.
No. Or not. Or...
You looking at your calendar?
That's what's still in June. Fourth, the 17th.
Is Sunday better?
Sunday's probably easier.
I can't do this, oh, wait. Yeah, I can't. Do the 17th.
Remember that the weekend, Father's Day weekend is the...
18th.
18th. Well, that would only be Jarvis. Sorry, dude.
I can't do that.
My question is, what is your expectation of staff in regard to attendance?
None.
None.
It's self-reflective.
Except for Dr. Gordon.
Yes.
Who will be leaving us and it will be one of our last opportunities.
Did he say first aid?
Or referees or anything?
I know, yeah, you make a valid point.
So where are we?
Did you say no to the 24th?
I cannot do the 24th.
How about the 25th?
I can do the 25th.
Can you do the 25th tomorrow?
Barbara, did you have an issue with Sunday?
Going once, going twice.
What time?
After church.
After church. What time is your church end?
12.
1:00?
Yeah, let's do one. I need to check my social calendar, which I don't have here, but let's put it in for the 25th.
Do you have a location?
Yeah, I was just going to say, where?
Your house.
Wait, Ms. Wright, does that give you time? You got to make a public announcement, right?
It has to be announced.
Right.
And what, okay, so where?
School.
To be decided.
Can you think about that?
Yeah.
Because if you do it in one of those facilities, we're going to have to have somebody there.
Right.
I have a place I can ask, downtown.
Okay.
It's just us.
Do we have food?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
So can we, when do we need to announce it by?
Are you sure?
It's only three working days that are required for regular days.
So by, what is today? This is Monday. By Thursday? Can we get you, can we define all that by Thursday? Where we're going to have it, arrange for food, all that? And we'll make sure, so by Thursday? Because that's your last, I mean, you're in on Thursday, right? No.
How about Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Can we get it done by Wednesday? You just need to check the place. And we have food. We'll just work something out. We'll figure that out. Okay. Yeah, okay. All right. So the 25th, 1:00, place to be determined. And I'll follow up with Debbie on Wednesday, and Ms. Holmes is going to check on a location. That should be easy as well. Okay?
Yep.
Update on original Walker Grant renovation.
All right, good evening again. I am proud to announce to the board, a nice transition update as we move on from conclusion of Phase 1 to Phase 2. This will be my last update to the board, but we'll have some great things that we'll talk about here. The biggest piece that we've been missing from Phase 1 is the completion of our front atrium. If you all took a notice and looked at the previous picture, you saw the front glass and exterior stairwells that you'll be able to see from the outside. This picture was taken last Wednesday. As you can see, that we now have, the inside part of the stairwells has been encased. All of our steel has been delivered, and we should have completion of this by the middle of July at the latest. One of the things that we want to talk about is making sure that once this is done, we will also have our school marquee, which will be done as well. And this will be the primary entrance into the Walker Grant Center once it has been concluded. Phase 2, pictures here. This is first floor hallway near the cafeteria. The doorway that you see on the right is one of the entrances that you used to come into the Head Start program. To the left would be where the cafeteria would be. As you can see, we're going to end up widening these halls a little bit, very similar to the way that we have things that have been completed in Phase 1, which will include hallway benches, also some furniture down that area. We're really happy to see the progress of Phase 2 is moving forward according to schedule. With substantial completion still being done by August 15th. The same construction crews and same subcontractors that we have for Phase 1 have been working diligently. We did lose a few days unfortunately because of all the rain that we had a couple of days ago, which did shut down the transfer of some equipment, as well as some of the landscaping that was occurring outside. But internally, electrical equipment has been put up, also drywall. We've also removed and kind of gutted the majority of the classrooms and created new office spaces for our cafeteria staff, Ms. Boxley, who serves as the head custodian over there, as well as Head Start and People Personnel Services and staff, which will be housed in the Phase 2 area. Very similar to the other classrooms that we already have done, this is a typical format of a Head Start classroom, which will include interior cabinetry, as well as each Head Start classroom and Early Childhood Special Education classroom will have their own bathroom. We also wanted to make sure with great help from Mr. George and the Department of Technology, each classroom will also have an active wall that will be placed in there. And we also wanted to add some additional cork and bulletin board space. One of the things that we could really have an advantage of in Phase 2 is we can really see what worked. Once we completed Phase 1, maybe make a couple of tweaks, a couple of change orders for that. And one of the things that we did want to do with some of these classrooms here in Phase 2 was make sure to re-add additional bulletin board space. So rear parking lot, this area used to be the tennis courts, grass, dirt, mud, et cetera. The entire overall parking in the Walker Grant Center will have a total of 88 parking spaces, with the majority of these, 65 of them being in the back. We already have the 23 that have been completed up front. As you can see here, we have a lot of the equipment from English Construction that's actually leveling the land. We'll begin asphalt being put down and lines being put down during the month of July. This will be any additional parking for any of our groups and organizations that will be coming to school board meetings. I also do want to remind the board that we also have parking that will be available in the front of Walker Grant Center there on the street. And Dr. Melton has put in a request for us also to include some steps leading from Ferdinand Street directly up into the front parking lot area. We will have several signs that we're placing in the back parking lot, letting everyone know the specific entrances that you will use, depending on what your business will be at the Walker Grant Center. There will be one specific entrance for Head Start, one for school board administration, and one for just general maintenance.
So you say we have our own parking spots? Oh, that's not what you're saying.
No, no, I'm sorry.
How many parking spaces are we adding?
We are adding 64.
That's what you said? Okay, that's amazing. Yes.
How many staff total will be in that building, do you know?
54.
54 total staff?
Total staff, when you add school administration, as well as Head Start, Early Childhood, Special Education staff. That is if everyone is there at the exact same time.
Same time, right?
Yes, ma'am. This is the media center. Gone away is the old library that we had in original Walker Grant. We did keep some of the interior shelving that you see there, but the media center is going to be a lot bigger, about 1.5 the actual size that it was previously, including three televisions, an active wall, additional space being used for students to be able to have cooperative learning sessions with the librarian or any teachers that will come to that area. We will also have additional computers that will be in there. I'm working with Mr. George and looking to add four to six computers for this area. We really believe that this media center is going to be a nice staple of the Walker Grant Center. It will be upstairs on the second floor, and it's one of the first things that's being built as you transition from Phase 1 to Phase 2 of the building. It will be the closest to the Finance Department office once everything is finalized and laid out. New Head Start entrance, as you can see here, we have a picture actually of our project supervisor and superintendent, Mr. Henry Blanton, who is our chief lead of English Construction. He's the guy right there on the right that's actually putting in some orders. This is the Head Start entrance where you will have a buzz-in system. We have a total of 24 car readers throughout the building, and we also will be able to have a sliding gate right there so you can actually see people as they're coming up, very similar to the Aphone system that we are using currently at Walker Grant Middle School, as well as Hugh Mercer Elementary School, but we'll have the same system set up at the Head Start entrance. Ms. Gail Cockrell, who is working with the Head Start staff, she's been doing a good job right now of, when people are coming up, asking them what their identification is, their reason for the visit, and then letting them into the building. We will do the exact same at the Walker Grant Center once this area is completed. This, if you're looking from the front of the building, this will be on the right side. It will be a side entrance now to the Head Start part of the Walker Grant Center. One of the things that we did add is we realized that we wanted to make sure that all of our school buildings had a marquee. And if you all remember, a couple of months ago, we had to present this marquee proposal to the Architectural Review Board. After a few tweaks, this is a great rendition of how the Walker Grant Center school marquee will be. This will be to the right of the front atrium. Because this is in the historical district, we had to make sure that the marquee itself had the exact same architectural and brick structure as the Walker Grant Center building itself. We decided not to go with the traditional sign, which you can put messages up because it did not match the Architecture Review Board's feedback. So we wanted to name it with our logo, as well as the different offices that would be available within the Walker Grant Center. The key here is making sure that once the front atrium opens, the Walker Grant Center marquee will be there as well. This would be very inviting to let everyone know. You will be able to see it from the street, seeing as you pull up that this is a different building, very aesthetically pleasing, and we really think this will attract everyone to use this as the main entrance to the building. So when I spoke with Dr. Melton and Ms. Catlett about this proposal of bringing the school marquee to the Walker Grant Center, I then let them know that we want to rework some things that you all have seen previously with our Pepsi deal, piggybacking on the deal that we have with James Monroe High School, to also add school marquees to all of our buildings. We felt this was something that was long overdue, also to provide consistency and uniformity. And so I did want to show the board some pictures of the new marquees, in case you have not seen them up at the schools already. This is the day that Hugh Mercer's marquee was actually put up. Our maintenance staff did a tremendous job. Stuart Science, who was our vendor for this, took about four, four and a half weeks to make the marquee, making sure that we had our school colors being embedded. Because Hugh Mercer is actually in the residential district, we had to use the traditional marquee with the letters that slide in and out, similar to what Walker Grant Middle School already had onsite. I'm happy to know that Hugh Mercer is already using this marquee. This is a great way of us really being able to advertise what's going on in our schools as we know the communications was a chief focus of the board at the last retreat that we had when we presented to you all. So we wanted to make sure the exact same thing was going to happen right there on Cowan Boulevard. Now you can be able to see what's happening at Hugh Mercer from both sides of the street. We had to kind of arrange some vegetation to make sure it's going to be visible, but we really think this is a great addition to the Hugh Mercer lot. Lafayette and Walker Grant Middle School, as you all know, we previously had a wooden sign that was there, "Welcome to Lafayette, welcome to Walker Grant," as well as Samuel Welcome to Lafayette, welcome to Walker Grant, as well as Samuel F. Armstrong Field. This is a digital marquee, similar to what we have at James Monroe High School. It's a lot, it's a little bit wider. We think that because this is actually in the commercial area, which is the reason why we were allowed to do a digital marquee, this is great to be able to advertise a lot of the great things that are going on at both schools. The key part about new technology is now both the staff at Lafayette, as well as Walker Grant, can actually change the sign from their office. They do not have to come outside with the remote and do that anymore. They can actually type in things from their office. And one of the first things that we want them to put up there is what was discussed earlier, based on the leadership from Ms. Sonia Walsh and myself and all the hard work, is that both Lafayette Elementary School and Hugh Mercer Elementary School are full candidate schools for IB. Ms. Walsh received a letter from Hugh Mercer this morning, so we were really excited to see that. So we can't wait till we put it up there, showing that we're one of the top gold standard of IB divisions in Commonwealth of Virginia, as well as in the world. This sign right here is something that we think is going to be very attractive, letting us know about events happening at both schools. I know that Dr. Wyatt and Mr. Terry have been communicating about who's going to be responsible for putting information up. Yes, it is Wyatt and Big, to make sure we can put as many things up there.
I think it's great that we have the signs. I don't want to be a Debbie Downer. I think this one could be bigger. Because it's, it's, you know, you're reading it as you're going up and down Route One, and it's not very big. And it, it's just compared to the school, just the dimensions of that, you know, versus a big school. But, you know, for the next one. You know what I'm just saying? It's nice to have it, it's nice to acknowledge that that's where the schools are. But I do feel like it could be a little easier to read if it were a little bigger.
I don't think we can do much about that now.
Well, no, I'm sorry, you know, for next time.
I was impressed when I drove by and saw it.
There you go.
Very good, very good. And so just to piggyback on your point, it was our goal to have a larger sign, but Architecture Review Board is very specific about limitations. So this was the biggest one that we can have. The sign cannot be over five feet tall, it cannot be over six feet in width. So we had to make sure that we did everything we could to get this sign up. So, we're pretty happy with it.
On the sign, the sign at the Walker Grant Center, is that going to be digital?
No, it'll just have a light, just will have a light sign on it. They will not allow digital signs.
I didn't think so, I was just making sure. And also, I will say that the signs are getting attention. I have been at two meetings outside of Fredericksburg, and people have, they knew it before I even had noticed it. So, you guys are upgrading your signs. And then it happened again at another meeting outside of Fredericksburg. Someone mentioned the new signs in Fredericksburg City Schools, so they are noticeable.
Excellent. And that's the entire goal. We really believe that marketing and branding of our schools, so that everyone knows what's going on, is really key. So transitioning back to the Walker Grant Center itself, we wanted to make sure that the board understood the timeline that we'll have for the remainder of the summer. Actually, beginning today, I had a discussion with Mr. Carneal. We'll begin to move some of the temporary classrooms out of the FCPS meeting room. Your school board meeting that you will have on August seventh will be the first main activity that we'll have in the meeting room. We'll be working with maintenance to make sure that the temporary classrooms are being moved to the two sides of the hall, the permanent classrooms we have. The good part about this is that the Head Start program is getting brand-new teacher desks, brand-new student desks, brand-new student chairs. So we're going to discard a lot of things that we currently have, as we're upgrading the entire building itself. The week of July tenth, we're going to begin the move-in of Fredericksburg City Public Schools administrators. Dr. Melton's staff, Ms. Catlett's staff will be the first folks to go in. We did a walkthrough last Wednesday, making sure that all of our signs was correct, as we're making a couple of adjustments. But it's going to be just a great facility to be able to look at. I think, once the board gets a tour of it, you all will see about the great work, the dedication, as well as the specific details that we added to this project, to make sure that it's going to be second to none. July twenty-first, as I mentioned earlier, the front atrium completion and marquee installation, so we're about six weeks away with that. As I mentioned earlier, August seventh, first school board meeting in the FCPS meeting room. Sometime between the fifteenth and the seventeenth is when we will have substantial completion in August. Once that occurs, we'll have, beginning the Phase Two move-in. This will include the cafeteria staff, Mr. Keenan's staff, his office will be there, Head Start and Early Childhood Special Education staff, even though some of them will already have their offices set in Phase One. We will know that by this time it rolls around, on August twenty-first, we should be able to have all staff into their permanent locations, including the Department of Technology, which is going to be in the area that used to be the old maintenance storage rooms. This is actually where English Construction is currently having their office right now. It will be the last group that will actually move in, because we have to have English Construction move out, so we can move those in. August thirty-first is what we have in account of a substantial completion, even though we know it's going to be a little ahead of that. This is when all keys will be turned over to Dr. Melton. Mr. Russ and Mr. George will take over as the two leads for the construction project. Mr. Russ has been coming to meetings with me for the last month, six weeks, so he is well up to speed on everything that will be happening. Mr. George and Ms. Baxter Christopher will be the two individuals that will be in charge of the actual move of the administrative staff into the Walker Grant Center. And as we move forward after your board meeting, I'm sure Dr. Melton will share with you all his plans for having a soft and grand opening of the Walker Grant Center. This will take place sometime in early fall, that specific dates have not been put forward yet. But we're thinking about sometime September, October, after everything has been done, after we've had our last checklist, to make sure that every nook and cranny is correct, there's no paint chips, each tile has been changed. We want it to be perfect by the time that we have the grand opening. We will invite members of the Walker Grant Alumni Association back for that. I remember Mr. Buddy Hamm, last week he came in to measure all the display cases for all the artifacts that he has. A lot of artifacts are currently sitting in the area that was reserved for my office right now. We'll be putting those up in the next couple of weeks. This facility is going to be second to none. And definitely want to thank City Council, as well as the board, for all their support in getting it done. As I turn these keys over to Mr. George and Mr. Russ, I'm extremely confident that they will carry it on. And I can't wait till you guys invite me back to the grand opening to be able to see it.
Yes.
Any questions?
We can talk about it at the board retreat.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks fabulous.
I do have, you can stay seated. I do have a sort of an interesting question, and actually is a good segue to where I'm going next. There's a lot of dirt being moved around out there, a few bushes being pushed around. Have you all unearthed anything interesting over there, any rock formations? And what about any interesting critters you might have seen sliding around over there?
The critter piece I did want to hear about.
Okay.
But we did find some artifacts, including a bench and a couple of slabs, they believe was from the original building. So we had Henry Blanton, our project supervisor, who's actually saved these artifacts. We showed him to Dr. Melton and myself, they're actually sitting in the bench, which is right in the office. We're going to put the bench on the inside of the firstborn engine that we trained.
Wow. Is, what's it made of?
It's a stone, it's a stone bench, yeah.
And it was buried in the dirt?
Part of it.
Wow.
Part of it. And so what they found is that, I need to get it out, I need most of the way. We were really happy to see that. We also had-
It's intact?
Intact.
That's, that's fantastic.
We also had some bushes that we had used previously, some trees that were dedicated to our employees. We have preserved all of those. I'm there, and the majority of those have only been replanted. English Construction, the first choice of most offices, I'll make sure that every facility we've already asked to preserve the division. This is where the project was made clear. I've been there, had some conversations from the Walker Grant Alumni Association, who have their own desk in the office and storage area. We're going to change the artifacts out every nine weeks, to make it like a museum format for Walker Grant. All the different things, we're talking about band uniforms, football uniforms, pictures of graduating classes, even pictures of classrooms. We've had several individuals have contacted myself and spoken to Dr. Melton and Mr. Hamm, while making sure that we set up several tours in the fall, if they're really going to see these.
Great.
Thank you.
Outstanding.
I had one quick question. You mentioned getting rid of the desks and chairs and things that are there now. Do you have a plan for what to do with them, or are you just tossing them, or?
I've had some conversations with Mr. Baker. Of course, we have to audit everything.
Right.
The majority of the stuff that we want to share, we believe is in pretty good.
Is it, okay. I was just thinking if there was some way that we could, you know, put that to use somewhere in the local area, if somebody needed it.
And, and, Mr. Baker, we have to declare it surplus. And once it's declared surplus, then we can offer it.
Okay.
Yeah, they talked about that at the Head Start Policy Council meeting. There's a plan in place to try to share some of the wealth, preschool programs.
Great. Any additional discussion? Thank you. We have two additional information, information items. The first is I wanted to update you on-
Jarvis, we've got some parents here to do the thing on the homework thing.
Okay.
You want to let them go first?
Sure. We have parents here, let's do that then. We'll switch the, the order, and we'll ask for the homework regulation update.
All right, well, good evening Chairman Bailey, school board members, and Dr. Melton and guests. We're going to keep you awake just a little further and talk about homework now. So hopefully that'll work. We have, in your hands, and I'm hoping it's right in front of you at this point, is a final product, or at least a proposal for the board to examine. And it should look like this, if you have it in front of you. This was our final product from a number of collaborative meetings of school professionals and parents, including members in the room tonight. Special thanks goes out to Dr. Harry Thomas for his leadership, as he facilitated this process along. Also, thank you to Mrs. Holmes, who was part of that process, and Mrs. Catlett, who are also with us tonight and worked on this project. Tonight, though, I would like to introduce two members of this committee that are here to share more about this process by which we came to this document. And that's in front of you tonight. So, tonight we're going to hear from Emily Heller. And she is a Walker Grant staff member, as well as a parent of three in Fredericksburg City Public Schools, as well as Leslie Martin. She's with us too, and she has two children in the city schools. She's also a parent and professor at the University Mayor of Washington. So it gives me pleasure to bring them up tonight to talk to you about this process. Please come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nothing like talking about homework at nine o'clock on a Monday. Dr. Thomas asked both of us to be here tonight to speak to you about the pretty great process that we went through in developing the document that you have in front of you. So, jump in anytime. The committee consisted of, like Mr. Terry said, teacher leaders, administrators from each of our buildings, central office, school board, parents, as well as our NYPD coordinator to help us make the connection to IB. And I think we met almost monthly for several months. The first meeting was very impressive, the whole committee came together at Lafayette. And there were binders for each member that contained pertinent research on homework, best practices, as well as printouts of our own current regulation and policy, and several policies from other school districts in the region. And then we worked over several months, doing really working sessions. We came each time with a little bit of homework, and when we were together, we broke off into groups mostly by our school building and worked through some questions, worked on chart paper, and shared back as a whole group. And it was really exciting to see how much we had in common when we came back together. When we looked at the research and the best practice, even in separate, smaller groups, when we came together, we all had a lot of similar focus, folk eye. And eventually we moved to trying to come up with a revision to just update our policy to include best practices, IB, and parent feedback. And a smaller subcommittee met to do sort of the wordsmithing and brought it back to the larger group. And ultimately, we came up with what you have in front of you. It was a really collaborative, vertical working group that I found to be very informative, both hearing feedback from parents and from kindergarten all the way up to twelfth grade, AP, to how much, how many minutes should we spend reading every night at every level? It was a lot of good discussion.
So, the, I'm sorry, I don't know how to judge space. The only things that I would want to add to that description is, when Mr. Terry invited me to join the committee, I had literally no idea what the goal was. And so it was actually wonderful to show up at the first meeting that I attended. Like, I wasn't sure, was there a preordained outcome that was being sought? And I definitely did not feel like that's what the process was. It was very evidence-driven, both by the scholarship that Dr. Thomas had pulled together, but also by the different school participants who had surveyed the teachers, and to find out what did people currently do about homework. And then there were some very frank discussions about what the current practices are at the different schools. And so I, I thought that was a really open, very exciting process. I thought it was really cool that parents were invited to participate, I loved it. I would do it like in a hot second again on anything, except that other parents should also be asked. And so I wouldn't want to hog it. But it really was, it was a really, it was wonderful. And I very much appreciated that I was asked my experiences, but that the parent experiences weren't assumed to speak for all of the students. And so I think that was a pretty great combination, so.
I don't know if anyone has had an opportunity to look at the policy, or if you have any questions, but we were mostly hoping to just tell you about how we came to the point of that document in front of you. But if you have any questions, we'd be happy to speak to the discussions behind them.
I would just like to add something that Leslie Martin brought up about, that we were, it really did, all the discussions took into account all of our students. So it wasn't just our high-achieving students, or our low-achieving students, or our students with means, or our students. All of our students, I feel like, were well-represented by the teachers and the parents, and the research that was provided. So it was, it was a really good collaborative experience, I would agree with that.
How many parents were on the committee, again?
Yes, we, the intention was one from each school, so most of the meetings, there was usually someone from each school. Sometimes I was a parent and an employee, depending on attendance. But yeah, we tried to have one from every building.
So, it sounds like the, the process that you went through was very good, and, and had a very good outcome. I think it would be really neat if we could come up with like an after-action kind of summary, you know, report. Not, not report, that's too big of a word, but just a documentation of the process that you went through, and any tips, and, you know, things specifically maybe that was done, so that we can capture that for, and, and have that for the next committee that, that comes together.
That's great feedback, I'll pass that along to Dr. Thomas, and I'm sure we can come up with something like that.
Yeah, I, I mean, just, and, and maybe get input from key players, yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so, I'm probably old-school. And as I, I read through this, I, as a parent, would have expected the teachers in our school system to already be doing this. I particularly liked number four, where it said, homework will not be used for disciplinary purposes. I wouldn't have expected any of our teachers to do that. But again, not having children currently in the system, I can't speak to that. And I particularly liked number three, where homework will be assigned with consideration given to student access to resource materials. And I would expect our teachers to take into account the population of students that we have, because we have all students here in Fredericksburg. And if resource materials had to be made available, our teachers would ensure that all students receive those resource materials. I am concerned that, as a parent, I would want a teacher to feel comfortable giving my child more homework if I ask for it. So while I openly support this, I don't want to block our teachers in a corner where they are unable to make judgment calls for students that the relationship with the parent is welcoming. And in addition, when I look at advanced and honored students, then I don't want the public perception is that they get special treatment and can have homework on holidays, and we can't, and we need it. So I, you know, I just think that we should be open to some of these things, and still have faith in our teachers, that they will make the correct judgment calls needed. I just don't want this to be a one-size that has to be utilized at all times. But I commend you on the fine work that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional issues with that? Great work. I'll be interested to see how the policy is received, and how teachers are, are meeting the expectations within the policy. I just know that, being in education, homework is a big deal. And there's a lot of history and emotion tied up into how people feel about homework, so.
I just want to clarify that it is a regulation and not a policy, because, you know, we, we talked about that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we talked a lot about, that at the building level, that there would be checks and balances, so as we move forward.
Okay. Excellent. All right, the next additional- Okay. Excellent. All right. The next additional information item, I wanted to update you on something that we talked about at the May 1st board meeting. I informed you that the Clean Green Commission would be sending a request to us. Actually, the process of us talking with the Clean Green Commission started back in, in March. I attended a meeting at which Dr. Gordon and Mr. Baker were conspicuously absent. And so from that meeting, we were fortunate enough to have students come to us from Walker Grant, I believe. And at that meeting, the commission asked that we, the board, publicly make a statement about supporting recycling in our division, which we did at the April meeting. Long story short, is the commission did ask us to create a proclamation. We have not taken any action on that. And based on what we are currently doing with recycling and other types of environmentally sound actions, I think that we probably should do a couple of things. We need to continue to discuss what is appropriate. I think we've already publicly stated our commitment to recycling. And we are doing a number of things, aren't we, Ms. Holmes, in our schools?
Yes.
In that request that the commission put before us, they asked for a number of items. And what I'm going to ask that we do is allow Dr. Melton and staff an opportunity to review the requests more thoroughly. There were four points that the commission asked us to consider for a comprehensive recycling program. And I won't read them, you can read the letter for yourself. But I would like for us to have our administration to take a look at that and then lay out for us some options for where we might go with a more comprehensive program. One of the things that I would be interested in is there are counties around us that have recycling programs. And one of the things that I'm aware of is how they, that they do use their vendor for trash pickup. And I don't know, you know, what's involved in that, but I would really like for us to query our current vendor to find out what options they might have available, some of the things that the commission is asking. But again, primarily is to give our superintendent and administration an opportunity to review and then to report back to us based on what's been asked of us. Does that sound fair?
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Melton, does that sound reasonable?
I think-
The other player not to forget about is, you know, in the city, we have city trash services. Counties don't have those. They contract all that out, and you have to pay for that separately. So that might even be something else to look at. I have no idea if they have any capability to do that.
Do we have a contract? Do we, we have a contract for trash pickup?
We do. This is kind of catching me by the side.
But I meant for recycling, we could at least ask.
What I, what I'm suggesting is that we're doing some work, and the proper thing to do is, is to have Dr. Melton respond to the request, is to, is to think about it and to analyze it, and then to come back. We have an opportunity in the fall for American Recycling Day, if we want to do a proclamation. We could do one then. But I think what we need is, we've shown our support, we are in favor of recycling. And what the administration needs to do is not have us micromanage, but then to respond to what has been asked and say, here's where we go, here's the cost, here's what we see, here's the vision that we have based on what the commission has asked us to do. Here's how we can fill in the gap. Here's what we recommend.
I, I think it would be a good idea, when we do that, if we also have our perhaps outgoing Dr. Gordon, I really am not picking on you this time. I really, well, no, but I think you're the most appropriate person to kind of come up with some kind of list of the things we're already doing. I'm sure like with the new construction-
Before he leaves?
I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's really fair to lay that on Dr. Gordon.
It doesn't, whoever.
He's not going to be here very much.
He will be conspicuously absent.
But just the, the material, how we are doing that.
That would be the first thing we would do, is see what we are doing. So please let us have, we haven't even had a chance to talk about this.
Absolutely.
Please let us-
I just know that we are doing some things, and it would be good for us to be able to-
We are. And we all need to understand the things that we are doing before we can make a commitment to do other things.
Right.
For example, what kind of contract do we have? What's the length of the contract? When does the contract end? Does it roll over? A lot of those kinds of things.
I think some people don't know, too, that when we did the renovation, well, the HVAC replacement at Walker Grant Middle School, that we also used, that we replaced the lighting, you know, those kinds of things, is what I'm, with energy efficient.
We tried to get more energy efficient, or we did get more energy efficient with those things.
Great. Thank you.
That's what I meant.
Oh, business. We have an organizational meeting coming up, coming up, May, I'm May.
July.
July. Monday is what I'm trying to say, July 10th, 2017. We have VSBA orientation for school board chairs and vice chairs, or new school board members and superintendents. 17th of July in Richmond, the VSBA Conference on Education, the next day, the 18th, in Richmond. And I am attending at least one of those. Anybody else going to the Conference on Education?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Yes.
I'll be out of town.
Okay. You might want to come, Ms. Kay.
I might.
You might. Okay.
I've been in 25.
Right now.
New business. We need to get a volunteer for the Word of the Month for July and August from the board.
Ms. Boyd, have you ever done a summer?
I knew it was coming.
No, but I've already volunteered today.
What did we decide those words were? I'll do kindness on one of those. I think that's one, what-
No, that's the old list.
No.
The old list was patriotic and patience.
They're still the same. Oh, patience, you're right. Patriotism for July and patience for August.
I thought we switched them because of IB.
Yeah, didn't, you came up with the words.
Right.
There's 10.
Right. There are 10 IB ones, and then we talked about two other ones that we could do during the summer.
So you guys were given the flexibility to decide which two.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you guys have a choice made of concrete decision.
Are you volunteering to do one?
Janon wants to do kindness.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do kindness.
In July?
Sure. No, July is patriotic.
Oh, we did, that is patriotic.
Okay, I'll do August. Kindness would be-
Kindness in August. Debbie is right, you got that. And is there volunteer for patriotic in July? Ms. Boyd, you going to do July?
Sure.
Okay.
Volunteered again.
You volunteered, didn't you?
You did.
Well, I think that's it. So we're moving to the Good of the Order, and since we are picking on Ms. Boyd and all of her volunteer duties, I want to thank her for the prayer, stepping in to do the prayer at the retirement event.
I heard one of the best events.
Yeah, I heard it was. And I think you have a permanent job. I heard it was very, amen, that's all I can say. It was good. All right. Anything else for Good of the Order?
I don't want to leave on a, on a sad note, but I do feel like I would like to acknowledge that two of our Walker Grant students died over Memorial Day weekend. And I wanted to say publicly that our hearts go out to these families and to our Walker Grant family. And then I'll, then I'll say, I'm happy about all the graduation things that are coming up and the celebration and the, and look forward to all of those things.
Anything else? Dr. Gordon, will you be with us again next month? Okay, this is it.
Well, then, thank you.
It's been real. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Thank you. Good luck.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Some questions.
Good night.
All in favor.
Yes.